It is done.
We're last six minutes.
Mine.
Yeah, okay. Call the meeting in order. Everybody please stand and pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the great body of our rich states, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Want to real call? Ben here, Sherry.
Here.
Vernon here, Ty here, Vicki.
Yeah.
Show all five's here. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight as we take a moment to recognize a very special citizen and community member. Hayden Maples has been a resident of Baser since 2019, and we are so thankful he and his family chose Baser to call home. Since his arrival, he has made it his goal to serve Baser and better our community. Hayden has been very involved in our community, and this includes volunteering with the Baser community volunteers, and also serving on our planning commission before joining the city council in 2022. Hayden's commitment and dedication to his community have been major factors in ensuring Baser is set properly for a successful future. This evening, please join me as I recognize with respect and great appreciation the contributions Hayden has made for our community. He has had a huge involvement in ensuring Baser is a town that we can be proud of, and I know we will all continue to see many great things from him. Hayden, on behalf of myself, the council, and our city, thank you so much for your dedicated service.
Thank you very much. Here for you, Hayden. Hard to take that council then.
Got everybody. One, two, three.
Ben Hayden, we appreciate everything you did here. Order the public. Public comment will be allowed at the mayor's discretion. This is exclusive of items requiring a public hearing. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. As a reminder, the public and city council members alike, the city council staff will not engage in dialogue or debate with any speaker pertaining to any comments made. Members of the public wishing to speak must keep their comments germane or relevant to specific items before the council. Please wait and be recognized by the mayor. Remember to state your name and address for the record. If you're online and would like to participate, please type your name in the chat and wait to be recognized before I'm muting and speaking. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on anything? Somebody online, Kathy? Okay, we'll go into the regular meeting then. Item number one, need a motion for consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
The motion is second. I'll take a vote. Vicki?
Aye.
Ty?
Aye.
Vernon?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
This is five oh. We need to do a separate than that, because I'm okay. Wrong number two, item number two then, city of Baser legislative priorities. Leslie, are you there?
Be able to turn the volume up. Try turning the volume up because I think I can hear her speaking, but. Oh, I'm sorry. Just couldn't hear what she was saying.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now. Thank you.
Okay, so sorry, my computer decided it needed to reboot in the middle of the meeting starting. Anyways, Leslie Riverola, city administrator, thank you for allowing me to join you by Zoom this evening. What you should have at your desks and what was distributed this afternoon is a copy of a letter or testimony that deputy city administrator Mattie Waldeck prepared on behalf of the city to read at tomorrow's senate hearing in support of Senate Bill 196. As you know, the city council has passed two different resolutions of support for property tax relief for the state. And one of those is in support of the state considering reducing or eliminating the state mill rate of one and a half mills on property tax. The, in the event that the senate and house choose not to consider that proposal, then our resolution of support says that we, you know, really remain steadfast in our desire to see LAVTR fully funded. I think the council had the opportunity to receive some information on the cost to Baser citizens over the, over the life of the LAVTR not being funded. And so we look forward to working closely with the legislature and hopefully being able to provide some real tax relief to our citizens. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but that's the information that we have to share today.
See, anybody have any questions for Leslie?
Nope.
Sorry.
Vernon? No. Sherry?
Thanks.
Uh, there's no questions, Leslie, at this time.
Okay, thank you. Well, we will have several of us providing this information to the legislature tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you for giving that report, Leslie. Item number three, adjournment of the regular meeting. Need a motion. Mr. Mayor, have we adjourned the regular meeting? The motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Your motion is second. Take a vote. Ty?
Aye.
Vicki?
Aye.
Vernon?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
This is five oh. We'll go right on into the work session. Item number one, ETC citizen satisfaction survey.
Thank you. Kathy, if you wouldn't mind pulling up the ETC presentation, thank you so much. So as the council is aware, in 2019, the city conducted its first ever citizen satisfaction survey. The purpose of that survey, as performed by the ETC Institute, is really to gauge citizen satisfaction and provide kind of a baseline of where citizens think our services are in terms of performance. There are a certain number of questions that appear on those citizen satisfaction surveys that are consistent really amongst all cities and counties that ETC performs these services for. And then there are some opportunities, of course, to ask some city-specific questions if we have particular particular areas of interest or focus. Kathy, if you wouldn't mind going to the next page. So just a brief recap, and I know that we talk about this throughout our different budget processes, but in 2019, our citizen satisfaction survey really provided, again, a nice baseline for us to be able to work from. It's recommended that you perform these citizen satisfaction surveys. You can do them as frequently as you want, but you know, kind of industry standard is about every five years, so we're right on target for that. Just kind of a friendly reminder for everyone. You know, the, the results of our citizen satisfaction, citizen satisfaction survey from 2019, generally, our residents do have a very positive perception of the city. That's something that we certainly would like to maintain. And I think since 2019, we've taken some significant steps and efforts to try to ensure that we're increasing our communication and, you know, really trying to focus on some of the priority areas that our residents said mattered to them. As a general statement, our, the satisfaction with our city services were much higher than the industry standard and performance, performance against other communities kind of nationwide. And the top priorities that were identified by our citizens in 2019 included the list below. And again, those have been a focus of this governing body throughout the budget process, really since the time that we received that first citizen satisfaction survey moving forward. Next slide, please. Okay, I think that page is supposed to have some questions on it. I'm not sure what's going on with that. But if it had appeared, we would actually have some sample question format, and I'll just tell you what it said. And for a friendly reminder, if you didn't receive a survey back in 2019, the way that ETC gauges or rates its questions is for a respondent to say extremely satisfied, very satisfied, satisfied, not satisfied, completely dissatisfied. And again, they try to maintain a kind of a standard response amongst those questions. Kathy, is there anything on the fourth slide of that or no? Was it blank also? All right, so since we weren't able to look at just kind of question format, which again is, is not that important to today's presentation, but we wanted to provide kind of an overview of what the high-level category of questions included from 2019. These are questions that we would anticipate carrying over. And then, of course, really the purpose of tonight's conversation is if there are other areas of focus that you would like to see us engage in, we would like to know what those would be as well. But the overall categories include overall perception of the city, public safety. Of course, we want to know if residents feel safe in their homes, then in their businesses out in the community. Perception of safety, code enforcement, trash and recycling, funding of capital improvement projects. That question, as you may recall, can also take the form of appetite towards different funding mechanisms. So it's not just, you know, are you satisfied with the capital improvements and projects that are occurring, but what is your willingness to pay for those services? And then based upon willingness to pay, what's your preference and, and manner or method for, or how you would fund those services? Parks and recreation, which would include trails, of course. Communication, which, as you know, we've made a tremendous amount of effort and investment in. Overall leadership of the city, which includes both staff and elected officials, customer service, city maintenance, which would include like street maintenance and then wastewater utilities. So that's really kind of the conclusion of my presentation on this item this evening. We have been in touch with ETC Institute. We anticipate hopefully being in a position to bring back sample questions for the actual survey itself here in the next month or so, if not sooner. We're actually scheduled to talk again with ETC Institute on Friday of this week. But they've been a great partner for us in the past, and we anticipate them being a great partner to us in, on this survey. And just as a friendly reminder, this is funded in the budget, so this is not an item that would require approval from a funding perspective, but we certainly would like input from the governing body to make sure that the questions that we're asking are, are what you want to see answered. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions for Leslie?
Do citizens get an opportunity to submit questions as well?
No, we've, we've not done that, and I don't know that that's something that they would recommend. The questions are really drafted, you know, by professionals, certainly topical, if we've got a category that we'd like to see explored, you know, that's certainly something that we could take into account. But as far as crafting actual questions, no.
Well, citizens have an opportunity to provide feedback on the questions that the council might, or that we might have city included in the survey.
I think that would be up to the city council to decide if that's something that you want to do. I don't know that that's in, I don't know. We did not do that in 2019.
The reason I'm asking is that, you know, we, you know, we've seen things from a, from one perspective, but maybe citizens might see something that we're just not catching. And so if they can submit questions, you know, it might not, other questions might not be appropriate. But if they're seeing something that we're not seeing, I think there's a benefit in at least looking at some of those questions.
Yeah, I would certainly defer to, you know, the mayor and other council members on, on how you would like to approach that.
They may have any thoughts about that.
Well, what I would say is our avenue of communication is online now, correct?
We have quite a bit of communication. That's correct.
Yes. And so there's a lot of feedback that does happen that way, which is a good thing. If the city understands that we're going to do a survey, we can look for their input that way. I mean, if they say something and say, wait, we'd like this excluded, then maybe we can look at that. And if they aren't saying anything, we're good.
They come down.
I also, Mayor, I apologize for jumping back in, but I did fail to mention there is an open-ended component at, towards the end of the survey tool. So if there's something that a resident wanted to give feedback on that they either didn't see in the questionnaire or that they felt like they needed to elaborate upon, they certainly have that opportunity on that survey tool.
I just think as being a servant of the citizens that, you know, we craft questions, but I think that, and as you pointed out, Leslie, and thank you for doing it. You pointed out that there is an avenue for people to potentially share stuff that we, for whatever reasons, might not have picked up on or might not have focused on or, or might not have saw, saw as much value as the person that's sending the information in.
Leslie, this is Sherry. Are, are these going to be mailed out to the citizens or will they go online to complete the questionnaire?
Great question. So these are mailed to typically a random sampling of households. I think they actually use voter registration as one of the methods for identifying households. And then if there's a target threshold to get to a statistically valid response rate, I don't know what that is off the top of my head because we haven't gotten their final proposal based on our updated population information. And if they don't get an appropriate response rate via mail, they'll actually start making phone calls to residents until we get to a statistically valid response rate. I would note from the 2019 survey, we didn't have any problems getting to a statistically valid number. We actually had a pretty high response rate for our community, and I would anticipate the same this time.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, great question.
Do you, does that suffice your, your question?
You know, as long, as long as, as long as we're not walking down this path without, you know, having.
With, with blinders on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I, I didn't want to use.
Yeah.
But I think that what Leslie clarified, and I think that what Vicki has also identified and what Hayden has identified, we, we have several means of being able to share our thoughts. But not everyone uses those, those tools. So I just wanted to make sure that, that if we're going to be a servant of the people, that we need to hear from the people. I understand this is a, a satisfaction survey. So we're trying to satisfy what we're doing or we're trying to satisfy what the citizens want, you know? So you're gonna have to have some input, I believe you would need to have some input from citizens. Doesn't mean that we're gonna answer every question. Doesn't mean that every question is gonna have merit or value, but it still gives the citizens an opportunity to feel, hey, I, I am involved with this community. This is what my thoughts are. And again, sometimes we don't always see, you know, what someone else is seeing. You know, Leslie talked about statistics, you know, we, we might get one outlier question that's way out there. You know, that does not really add to, add any value. Then two, we might end up with 15 or 20 questions that's the same or pretty similar, you know, how did we miss that? And it could be again because of our council president says sometimes we have blinders on and we're not able to see outside those blinders. So I'm just simply advocating for the citizens to be able to have input, you know, if, if possible and if appropriate, you know, into our satisfaction survey.
So Leslie, at the end, you basically stated that there's going to be just an open-ended question that leaving any additional comments or questions that you may have? Is that kind of what it would state?
That is correct.
So that, I think that would suffice kind of being able to, anybody that receives the survey would be able to voice their opinion or questions that, that may not have been added, you know, on our survey.
Absolutely.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Best. I guess.
I have, I'm gonna call it a thought. I don't think I really have an opinion on this one way or the other. But we did this, and I know five years is what you're shooting for, but we did it in 2019. We're about to tackle and actually show a lot of the things that they requested from 2019. Do we consider doing this on the sixth year after they actually see miles of trails and new roads and some stuff completed from their original 2019 survey? Instead of going out there right before we've done it, they could really see it.
Yeah, I think that's a very good point. I mean, you certainly could. We could also try to time it so that it is closer towards the end of 2024. We just, from a staff perspective, we understood that this was a funded project in 2024, and we didn't want council to think that we didn't recognize it as a priority, but we could certainly spend this time developing some of those questions. To council member Fields' point, if we want to, you know, solicit thoughts or at least ideas from the public, we could certainly explore the best avenue to do that. And then we could look at actually releasing this towards the, you know, end of 2024 after several of our bigger projects will be at least under construction or done.
I like your thought.
Again, I didn't have a hard opinion on where it goes.
I know we have the ability to add and adjust the questions. Would it be? Again, we don't know. We don't know. But if you want to solicit things from people, if you want people to join in and be part of, would there be just one question that we can ask the citizens, what would you like to see? We can put that in either the newsletter or whatever, and whichever is the most popular. Well, we could show the citizens that it's not just us looking at this, but. But this is also what you thought would be a good question for the purpose.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I didn't know if that was directed at me or if that was directed to your other council members.
Okay, I'll, I'll just leave it to any and all.
I, I like your thought. I think logistically, I'm just trying to think of what would be the best route to go. So would it be a survey that comes, not survey, excuse me, that would be the mailer that comes from the mayor? Would it be? Something that goes out via online social media? How are you wanting to retrieve back that information from?
Well, I think Vicky had identified some things and I think Hayden has identified some avenues. We just, I just think it would be a real novel idea. To have a, a citizen satisfying satisfactory survey. That included one. Generally uncut question from. A citizen, maybe the most popular question, as long as it does not address all the, the other questions that are on the survey. Because if it's addressing those questions, then it's, you know, it's just redundant. But that would just, I'm just thinking of ways to continue to keep people involved in the movement of the city.
So council member Fields, if I might, and Mayor, if I might, perhaps one suggestion, we could do a couple of things. If we are not urgently in a hurry to get the survey tool out and we have some additional time. If, if ultimately the consensus of the body is that we wait and release the survey at a later date. In 2024, even early 2025, then I think we have the benefit of time being on our side. We could certainly ask E T C Institute when we visit with them this week. What methods they've seen other communities use if they were going to ask for input from. Their citizens, we'll see if, if they've, perhaps they've run into another community that's done that. We can ask and hopefully maybe learn some lessons from that. And if they have not, then perhaps Maddie and Stephanie and I can put our heads together and come up with some. Avenues that we could perhaps do that, if that's something that interests the governing body.
I like that idea.
I think it's a good idea.
Well, I, I also realized when you're working with a company. And like I heard you say, there are a lot of questions that are consistent across cities. Sometimes it's hard. To make it customized too much. But we've got a quarterly coming out before too long and we'll have some more. So if there's information about the survey coming out and maybe even. A picture of the categories that would give heads up to people. Maybe and then stating if people have any thoughts, please present that to us. That would be an avenue. And I know from taking the survey myself. I did a lot of notes. And I know there was a place at the bottom where I could write in. Something that I wanted to bring to the city's attention. So I thought that was good. One thing, Leslie, I think maybe I heard you say something about. As taking the survey myself. I almost wanted, and I don't know how to word it myself. But it's something like. Something that would be a wish list or something you would be willing to have budgeted. And I think there's a difference sometimes from patrons. Like you can hear people say, that's a Taj Mahal. Well, we are, we're looking at. If people really want this, we're going to have to fund it. So I don't know if there's a way to really distinguish. Priority. And I think maybe there was in the survey. But that was something I heard from patrons and something I was concerned about when I took the survey myself. I don't know if it makes sense.
Oh, I think what you're saying makes total sense. And that's actually one of the things that's on our radar to talk about with E T C Institute when we, when we chat with them is, you know. Okay, are, are these priorities, but are you also willing to fund them? And so.
That's what I thought I heard you say.
Yes, so. And if you're willing to fund them, what, what mechanism do you want to use to fund them?
Sounds good.
Anybody else got anything? Okay, hey, we're good. What do you need? Do you need a consensus from us on how you want to move forward on this Friday? Or you, you wouldn't just come back to us next month meeting or what, Leslie?
So I think we'll just come back to you when we have some of this a little bit more flushed out. Well, tonight, really, we just wanted to get the item in front of you, introduce the topic since it was budgeted in 2024. Once we've had an opportunity to kind of work through some of the questions. And then figure out perhaps best avenues for soliciting some input on topical areas from the citizens. We can come back to you with that and then a proposed timeline for actually delivering the survey. Which it sounds like unless somebody says otherwise, maybe later in 2024. So we won't be in a huge hurry to get it back in front of you in the next month.
Sounds good to me.
I got one more point to make. Yeah, go ahead, Vernon. Leslie, I, I realize that you've done a lot of work of getting your staff together. And by me sharing my thoughts, you know, on trying to incorporate the, the citizens. I do not want to increase the workload on the staff by trying to. Trying to funnel things down to, 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 to a question. So, so I don't want to be. Something that's going to take up a lot of staff time, but yet something that we, I think we need to consider.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. Well, you know, I think there's probably a good balance to be found there. So let us put our heads together and figure out a, a way to maybe satisfy everybody's needs.
Thank you, Leslie. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Moving on to item number two, Basers Five Year Roadway Improvement Plan update. Bye, Hayden.
Mr. Gene. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Gene Maricle. I will. Is it on? Thank you.
I think so.
I will be doing the City of Basar Road Improvements Update for you this evening. And at any time, if you have questions. I've been working through this with other staff for the last four months. So it's very easy to me. So if you have questions, please ask during the update. So let's go to the first slide, please. So the history of the road improvements project. We started the road improvements identified as one of the top three areas for improvements in the citizen. Satisfaction survey back in July of 2019. And the governing body authorized all roads to be surveyed. A five-year improvement plan was approved to support current infrastructure and accommodate for future growth. Back in October of 22 and in December of 22, year one of the five-year plan was authorized and funded by the governing body. Year one, bids were not favorable to the city. Excess of the approved budget back in September of 23. And all bids were rejected. And we started the review for consolidating year one and two. To, to secure contracts or within the budgeted amount. Back in December and January of this year. Next slide, please. The recap of the budget in 2023 in the following was authorized by the governing body. Street improvements, 1.6 million. Curve improvements, 200,000. And 2024, street improvements, 450,000. Herb improvements, 150,000. Two million, 50,000 for road improvements, 2023 and 2024. 350,000 for curb improvements for 23, 20, 2024 combined budget. And working through contractors, we have set contracts with Barkley Asphalt 2024. Freeman Concrete Construction completed curb work in three areas in 2023. Sands Construction is currently starting to work on the 2024. Curb improvements for years one and two. Next slide please. So for the curb replacements in the 2023 projects, we had. Quite a accumulation curve that was going to be removed. For 2023 and using the assessments off the P C I rated, we started. A 2024 curb to be replaced in 23 to be ahead of what we were expecting the bids to be favorable for the city. So in 2023, we did Creek Bridge, Penn Oaks, which we're showing on 2024 to be rehabbed. And then 155th Street South at the roundabout going further south. Were so low on the P C I index, we really needed to address those issues on the high back curb. So in 2023, we did 4,407 millennial feet of curb. And in 2024, we have curb that is underway for. Prairie Gardens, Garden Parkway, Fox Ridge, Falcon Lakes, Christie Drive, Hickory Point. Wellington Place, Clam Street and Pinehurst East. Which will total 6,787 millennial feet. Which will total year one and year two curb replacement at 11,194 millennial feet. That is the most curb work we've ever done in a two-year span. It's really outstanding. Next. G O. I'm sorry to interrupt. Does that bring us close to what we're going to have to, are we going to have to do 11,000 every year? No, sir. Okay. That's going to bring us close to. Yes, sir. And what we're doing basically is playing catch up a year one and two. Okay. And. We have studied and we'll get into good roads and the P C I rating as we go. But we have printed that out. We have focused on the P C I ratings. And we have polled years one and two, and that's where we're focused on and is what is presented tonight. So for 2023 curb, the red areas are the sections of curbs that were replaced. So this is Creek Ridge subdivision. So all the curb work has been completed. Ready for mill, full depth patching and a two-inch overlay. Next slide, please. This here is Penn Oaks subdivision. Same again, all these box numbers. When we send these out to the contractors, it'll be listed through one through 25. Which has a specific address that references these box numbers. So they know where to go and we go out, paint the curb and we measure them. That way we know what. These reference an index sheet that goes along with these. And then these are also attached to the P S As as exhibits. And the contracts that are sent out to the contractor. Next slide, please. And then this is 155th. We did do some around the roundabout, but the picture I sent it chopped it off. This roundabout islands here and through here were really dilapidated, broke out. So they were replaced as well as going south, all the way down into the entrance of Cedar Lakes. And we have received numerous calls, you know, from citizens appreciating that work being taken care of. Next slide, please. So the schedule for 2024, as we talked about, are Garden, Prairie Gardens, Garden Parkway and Fox Ridge. Falcon Lakes, Christie Drive. Which is a two Colosseum Street. Just north of Hickory Point subdivision. Wellington Place, Clam Street, which is directly behind the elementary school. It is the only curb street in that open ditch subdivision and Pinehurst East. And that's again, 6,787 millennial feet. Excellent, please. And then we'll go through, this is the same thing. We go out, we measure all these and paint the curb. We assign it an index box and then that's all typed out and presented in the P S A when it goes to the contractor. So you have three different areas. You got Prairie Gardens, Phase Two. Garden Parkway and then into Fox Ridge Development. Excellent, please. So then Falcon Lake, same, we've got a lot of high back curb here. Then we get on to Clubhouse Drive, which is high back curb. Into Pines Estates and then. Our Pines, Falcon Lakes Estates and then over here. So we've got those three areas there. Excellent, please. The Hickory Point, Hickory Point subdivision. And then you have the Christie Drive subdivision here. Excellent, please. Wellington Place, single street, Colosseum at the end. Excellent, please. Clam behind the school. All the rest of this is open ditch. And we will address these road rate roadway repairs in 2025. Because it'll be a completely different process. And it's still based off of the P C I index of how it will categorize on what we look at repairing. Excellent, please. Pioneer St East. This is from Amber Road, the roundabouts up here, you come down. So we'll do this area through here, all the way down to Crimson. Excellent. So street areas for improvement, years one and two, we just listed out. So originally there was about five areas that were put out in the original bid. That we ended up rejecting those prices. And by reevaluating, utilizing areas that were in the first bid. Looking at different processes to how basically get more bang for our buck. Now we're looking at doing nine different developments areas. Ranging from south of State Avenue and south of Parallel. All the way up north. North of, or Ludmore Road, south of Parallel Road. So it's, it's a very spread out demographics of where the construction work will take place. And it again is P C I based. And that's what we've been focusing on, working with good roads and all of the other data that we've compiled over the last 12 months. Excellent, please. So, once we get through the curb work. On the original layout, there was different processes. One was eight inch depth milling, one was pressure paved. Some was two inch milling overlay and you know, there might be a gap here to. Micro and a patch here to mill and. So after going through all this, knowing that it costs. A lot of money to piece mill different places. All of these red areas. Are the eight inch full depth mill. So they'll actually go down through the sub base, through the sub base, mill it out, impact six inches of asphalt back in. Mill the whole area and then recompact two inches asphalt. So all nine of these areas will be overlaid with new asphalt after sub base work has been completed. And that's to me, again, that it's just amazing that we're able to get this done. With all the curb work, the under budget of our $2,050,000. Excellent. So this is Creek Ridge, then we have Wellington. Then we have Penn Oaks. All these red areas again are the depth patching. And then the purple is a complete two inch milling overlay. Excellent, please. Here's Willow to Hickory and then Christie Drive. Excellent, please. Prairie Gardens. So everything through this whole phase one of Fox Ridge. Garden Parkway, all the way up to just shy of where the school. Break in the asphalt is there. And then all of P G D. We are not doing anything on 159th because of the campus and we're going to be utilizing that with heavy equipment. That'll be addressed here probably within the next couple of years. Next slide, please. Then you have Pioneer's East. Next slide, please. Falcon Lakes, so from 142nd. After the curb works all completed from 142nd all the way to Seven Highway. Clubhouse Drive, Hollingsworth. All through here and all through here. And then once the asphalt work is. In this budgeted amount, we'll re-strike repayment striping all the way to 147th. Working off of Olson's layout design. Of what we determine, we want this parking area through here. So contractor was sent the design for striping. He priced it out. So the determination at the time. He priced it out. So the determination at the time, if we want to do different block outs or anything for that parking for permanent or temporary, we've got those numbers are also included in this budget. So we don't have to come back. We'll know what we want to do and have it done. Next slide, please. So road improvements plans, what do we call it?
Was hoping Gene was gonna keep talking. He handed me the mic. Um, so Mayor and Council, what we wanted to do was make a name for this project. And we've been calling it the Five Year Project. We took a vote in 2019 and it showed in the citizens satisfaction survey that roads are important. But we wanted to give it a name. So when they see their street getting improved, they know, oh, this was year one or two of of what? And so we asked our employees, we got a lot of great suggestions. Uh, nine different names were submitted and I was very impressed. Jean and Marianne were some of the submissions. And what was fun was the name we went with wasn't one that was submitted. It was a collaboration. So we were able to put different ones together. So no one, no specific person got recommendation or got the recognition, but it was a collaboration. So we really liked that. And you want to go ahead, Kathy? And that's what we were able to come up with. Oh, yeah, we really liked it. Combined a couple of the links we got from our employees. And so, um, if you want to go ahead and go to the next slide, Kathy? So our next, we're gonna do is communications plan. As Jean mentioned, we are starting for work 2024 next month and then streets are starting. Gina knows it's March, right? March, sorry. And so we have, um, some signage we're gonna create that are gonna be in the neighborhoods. And they're gonna see that it says, oh, roadwork coming soon. And we'll get those ordered. They're gonna be up in the next couple of weeks. So that'll be exciting. And the newsletter, as Vicky mentioned and Leslie mentioned, is gonna be out the end of this month. And we're gonna say it in there too. Hey, we're starting this, guys. You're gonna see it. And, um, we're creating new door hangers. I know Jean's guys got some. We're gonna make some that have that logo specifically on it that says, hey, this is what's happening. We're starting year one of the five-year plan. And I should say that most of this is so we know years one and two are taken care of, but if we have to go to a citizen vote or, you know, the vote for funding in the future, they'll know, oh, this is prepared to pay people progress. It'll help get that information out there as well. And, um, Kathy, if you want to go ahead and go to the next slide. Um, so this is what the first one is gonna be that we have on order. This is the whole banner that'll be in the neighborhood saying coming soon. And those are gonna be placed ahead in all those, the neighborhoods that Jean showed. Those are gonna be placed up. And these guys are very excited about this. So when that neighborhood, especially that we're using Pinehurst as an example, so when Pinehurst gets in progress, that sign's gonna come down and it's gonna say in progress. And then it's gonna keep rotating. So when Pinehurst is done, they'll get a completed as promised. And so they'll get to see the steps and three steps along with these signs. And we're also gonna be sharing on social media, obviously, like, hey, we're gonna see construction in our neighborhood. And Kathy, if you got the last one? And as you can see, this is the paving for progress timeline. And, um, yeah, we're planning on starting, uh, the article goes in the quarterly, this Baser Quarterly this month. And signs are coming soon. So we're hopefully gonna get those up. Oh, one thing Jean had mentioned, Good Roads, we're very excited about this. Um, is the company that we're going with and they're gonna have an interactive map. And my apologies that we don't have it ready for tonight. Um, that'll actually show residents. They can type in their address. It'll show your year three, your year one, and what is gonna happen to their road during that time. And so that, um, we've been working with Chris from Good Roads and he expects to have that ready in the next couple of weeks. That'll be exciting. We're gonna share that obviously with our public. Um, I was hoping to have it done by quarterly, but it's gonna be social media and possibly on the door hangers too. And, um, then yeah, we're gonna do the signage and stuff as the progress is, as the work gets underway. You have any questions?
Questions for either one of them?
That sounds great. I love the communications. And the fact that you said some of the other roads with ditches, that's further in the plan? Is that what you were talking about?
Yes.
So I think all the community will be excited and interested in what's happening there and being able to pull it up.
Yes, and as we assess going further moving with Good Roads, we'll be able to put in years three, four, five. Uh, it will be color coded. We'll show the process, um, of what will take place.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright. Awesome. Then presentation.
Yeah, excellent. Excellent. Very good.
Vernon? Vernon? You have anything?
No.
Awesome job, guys. Thank you very much. The communication is fantastic. It's what we wanted and we're getting it now. Thank you.
And teamwork.
Absolutely. Moving on to item number three, comprehensive plan, future land use update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. This item was presented to the Planning Commission last night and it received a recommendation, um, seven to zero, uh, for approval. Um, essentially what we are doing is we are amending the future land use map. As you all know, we adopted the Conference of Plans in 2022. Um, it is not unusual at all for future land use maps, which are documented, of course, that reside within the Conference of Plans to need to be amended as time goes on. Uh, the recommendations that we have made are relative specifically to Baser Town Center and the concept plan that the City Council approved or last summer. Um, essentially what we needed to do is we needed to um, include an area that showed high density residential, which would allow for apartments, as that's part of the concept plan that you all approved. Um, previously, that section there, Kathy, if you would go to page 22. Okay, thank you very much. Um, so we're just talking there about Baser Town Center and that area that is now kind of a brownish color was originally an orangish color, which allowed for, uh, medium density residential. Um, and so again, this is just bringing this document into conformance with that concept plan that has been approved by the City Council. We did have to update, if you will, several maps within the document because the same area showed up several times. So that's why you see the multiple figures. It's just the same thing over and over again. And then finally, we also amended the Baser Town Center Subarea Plan, which is again, within the Conference of Plan. Um, that is a subarea plan that is specific to Baser Town Center. And we just added some parkland that was previously not shown. And then sorry, Kathy, that's page 26. Um, and then we added a little bit of text talking specifically about apartment homes. Previously, it only talked about duplexes or townhomes. And those are the changes that we again presented to the Planning Commission last night. Uh, and they made a recommendation of it. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Sure.
Um, I think it looks really good. Um, I I have something later to to mention, uh, but not for Baser Town Center, but something for the future land map when it's appropriate.
Vernon, do you have anything?
No.
Looks really good. Thank you.
The A B C, what does that designate?
Yeah, of course. So on the actual, Kathy, if you go to the next page. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Response to those items.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Great job, Kristen.
Thank you.
After the meeting, could I talk to you real quick with Sherry? Hey. Item number four of your minimum work session. In motion.
Yeah, um, I I'd like to go ahead. Um.
Oh, you did. Okay.
So talking about the future land, you snapped that page 22 that you just had up. Um, I had spoke to a citizen this week and, um, I know down along the community of Pinehurst, there's an area that's a dark color for high density residential. And I was wondering if we might be able to request to have a revision down the road to align that to, uh, make the zoning and the future land use map to reflect like a residential commercial or neighborhood commercial. Um, and it's it's that area that's kind of there by the roundabout. Um, cause I know right now there's a conflict. So I just wanted to mention that if that could be something we could look at or or talk about maybe, um, changing or updating down the road.
Yeah, absolutely. I I'm fairly certain I know that you were speaking of the property that is located directly south of State Avenue on Pinehurst Drive. We had, um, some development applications come in last year for multifamily. Um, you are correct, Councilmember Sanford, that property is currently zoned as CP2, which is commercial. The future land use map does, um, call it to be multifamily. We know that application was pulled. Uh, as far as we are aware, the developer, um, plans to market it as a commercial um, property. And so amending the future land use map is something we can easily enough do. It does require, of course, the public hearing process and such. So we'll have to take it to a future planning commission. I do just, um, want to make sure, and I know everybody knows this, but I always like to say it, amending the future land use map in no way changes the actual current zoning of any property. So it's just the land use for the future to be considered. So, but yes, absolutely. If that's the consensus of this, um, City Council, then staff will absolutely, uh, bring that forward.
Is there many people at the meeting?
Uh, by many, you mean none or maybe one? Sorry, it was Zoom last night. I think there was maybe one member from the public.
Usually anytime you hear the word multifamily, that's town. So.
But no.
Okay, good.
Right, yeah. Uh, thank you, Crystal, for, I just wanted to bring that up since I'd had that conversation this week.
Absolutely.
I'll get to me. Mr. Mayor, may we adjourn? Okay. I have a motion in his second. Call and favor say aye.
Aye.
Six fifty-five. Look at that. Under an hour.
I know.
I'm trying to tell the.